Good evening and welcome to the Powell Elementary School District Board of Directors meeting. I'm opening tonight's meeting because we've been reorganized, so first we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, reorganization meeting on March 21st, 2018. Ken Stock.
Second.
Third.
Okay, so I have nominations or an order for the chair. I think I heard one for Cindy. Yeah? And it was second.
I seconded.
Yeah? Do you have that in the minutes for first and second? Very good. Um, are there any other nominations for chair?
Close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion to close. Do I have a second to close?
Second.
Okay. Since there's only one nomination, do you wish to elect by acclamation? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor of Cindy Brownell to be the Chair of the Powell District Board of Directors, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions?
No, I don't like that word.
Then it seems to be unanimous that she has been elected Chair and I will hand the sheet over to her and the meeting.
Okay, thank you guys. All right, now we need a nomination for Vice Chair.
Angie.
Second.
Nomination, and we close the nomination. All those in favor of Angie?
Aye.
Right. There you go Angie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tammy.
All right, we have nomination for Clerk. I hear motion for Tammy. Motion made and seconded. All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. My hand's up too.
You do a great job Tammy.
Yes, you do.
I don't know how you can listen and do it at the same time, but you do a great job.
You do a great job.
Two ayes and chief.
I do, please. Thank you John for pointing that out.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes?
May I suggest we, uh, we need a fourth, uh, fifth member. Um, I'd like to go after Todd.
Okay, is that a nomination for Todd Steinhaus?
Second.
All right, I hear, I hear nomination and I hear a second. All right, uh, any discussion? Good. All those in favor? Signify, all right, it's unanimous, Todd is back on the board, uh, and just...
Does he know that?
He does. I did email him and gave him fair warning and I told him what happened to you when you were gone.
Oh, yes.
And we have a habit, when the members aren't here, we just put them back on automatically. He said he would do that for a year and not a problem. Okay, next is the appointment of the committees. All right, um, SVSU. I would like to stay on the SVSU. Is there anyone else?
I will, okay.
All right, then Angie, you will be...
Unless you want to go on Angie.
I'll be the alternate again, that's fine.
Be the alternate?
Yep.
Okay. All right, um, Policy.
Tammy, are you still interested or you want to get rid of it?
I can't do it.
All right, I got it again.
Okay, Angie, you're on Policy.
What, when is it again Cindy, or?
It used to, well, they moved it to the second Monday. You have to double check, but I think it's the second Monday of the month now.
Is it still at four?
Um...
I'll get, I'll check.
You have to check, I don't know Angie.
We do have a, a food service that doesn't meet that often. Is anyone interested in that one?
Could do food service.
Oh, well, does it meet during the day though Cindy?
Uh, yeah, I think it's 3:30. That one's kind of hurt if you are. I'll take that one back. All right, uh, last time I think Todd was on tech.
Yeah, let's put Todd back on tech.
Okay.
He's good at that.
He is good at that. All right, now, under negotiations, there are three of them. Teacher, para, and administrators.
I'll do administrator.
Okay, thank you John. Just for the record, I had all three last night. All right, um...
I don't care, you can put me on it, whatever.
You want teacher or para?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, you do teacher, I'll do para.
Okay. You know it's popping out a good idea because you know I don't keep my mouth shut.
Well, that's why we want you on there. It's, it's kind of, um, sad when people get on it and don't say anything. Say what you feel, it's all right. I think that's all the committees. Is that Jim or did I miss something?
Thrown that, thrown that little saw in the back.
Oh, I didn't even see that. Hmm. Okay, I'll fill that out. All right, very good. Now, next is public comments. Do we have any public comments? Okay, all right. The next one is update on safety and security protocol and initiatives, Mr. Vic.
So, I asked Vic to come this evening. He's going, he's started off the SU meeting and then going to all the different boards in light of, uh, what's been going on, what happened in Flora and in the state of Vermont. We thought it was, uh, important that the boards hear what's, what we have done in the past 15 months and what's planned for the near future. And just a reminder, Vic, he's an employee of the MAU, but he has a stipend position with the SU for, he's our school's, uh, security coordinator, so.
Might if I step over you, left? Oh. Okay. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here again to, uh, update you on, as Jim said, uh, what we've done over the past 15 months. Every time there is a tragedy, uh, related to a school, I think everybody gets a little apprehensive. And, um, obviously it's, it's our job to try and, uh, ensure that we're doing everything we can to make their school safe and secure. And we're doing that by taking a very proactive approach. Uh, the days of where we could be reactionary and just react to an incident are over. What we have to do is, uh, plan ahead and we have to try and prepare for any type of incident that might occur. So, having said that, uh, we started off, uh, this past summer, uh, working together with, uh, Todd and the Powell Safety Committee. And Todd can attest to the fact, we spent many hours together, uh, talking about the emergency operation plan for, uh, Powell Elementary. Uh, one of the first things we did is we conducted a building safety assessment, uh, to look at the Powell Elementary School and really assess, uh, three areas in particular. One being the entryway, uh, second being the, uh, telecommunications system, and third being camera monitoring. Uh, so, to report back to you on that, I think you're aware of the fact that we have a video monitored entry, uh, and we also have, uh, an identification system, uh, and Powell, uh, has the, uh, really the distinction of being the first school in the SVSU to have the identikit system. And, uh, we were very impressed by that system and that caused us to do some investigation and research. And, uh, subsequent to that, we decided as a district, we wanted to have the identikit system at every school in the district. And, uh, we accomplished that this year. Uh, funds have been appropriated, uh, we piloted the identikit, uh, system at the high school. The version that we have is, is updated from what Todd has, but we're going to be updating Todd's system to that level. Uh, and it certainly allows us to do many things. Uh, one, to, uh, take the photograph of visitors, print the identification tag, the time and the date. And very important in that regard is that we generate, uh, a log that is in the computer. We can access that. And should there be an event or an emergency, that will allow us to account for everybody that's in the building. Uh, in addition to that, we have the, uh, identification tags that we issue substitutes, uh, which are a different color from those of visitors to be distinguished one from the other. Uh, we also have a need, uh, at the high school with, uh, a thousand students, uh, to be able to generate a tardy passes. So, a student comes in, uh, tardy, they have to go up to the touchscreen, uh, computer, they have to type it in, it then generates a pass for them that would have the date and the time and which class they're going to. And again, creating that same hard record for us. Similarly, we have early dismissals and we also can print, uh, early dismissal passes. All of these are on different colored labels, which would allow us easily to make a distinction as to whether it's a tardy pass or an early dismissal. So, uh, the pilot program at the high school has been highly successful, uh, and that caused us, uh, to meet with the superintendent and the SVSU Safety Committee and go forth with a recommendation to have that, uh, system in all our schools. So, I'm happy to report that. But going back to Powell, uh, we looked at the camera system in Powell as well. And we did, uh, determine that there was a need for some additional camera, cameras in, uh, the elementary school. And, uh, Todd, myself, and, uh, people from our, uh, IT department walked around the building. Uh, we determined where are the areas that are so-called blind spots or we really can use additional coverage. Uh, we generated a proposal that, as you know, you included, uh, in the budget, that it's passed. So, I have every belief that, uh, in the very near future, we'll have installation of those cameras, certainly before the beginning of the next academic year. So, having said that, the, the Powell Elementary School, now having good camera coverage, good telecommunications, and video monitored entry, uh, we're in good shape in that regard. So, uh, we are happy to say that we've accomplished that in all of our schools across the district this year. So, that was, uh, that was very gratifying for us. Uh, the next thing that, uh, I determined was that now that we have this video monitored access, it's only as good as the people who allow entry as a result of that, of accessing that system. So, somebody comes up to the door, uh, rings the airphone, which allows communication between the reception or the secretarial staff, but then that person has got to make a determination, is this an appropriate person to let into the building? So, they become our first line of security and it's, unfortunately, in some cases, our last line of security because once they generate entry into the building, that person's in the building. So, it was determined that certainly these people need some formalized training. So, this year I developed a seven-hour training, uh, that really focused on, uh, what is an appropriate person to allow into the building? And we really, uh, I taught this, uh, this module of training, uh, by using, uh, 19 different video scenarios. So, we looked at a video scenario, uh, they were, uh, allowed to critique and talk about how they would react to that scenario, then we had a module instruction that related to that. So, certainly we looked at what constitutes suspicious activity, uh, what constitutes a good physical description. We did an exercise where we had a role play, unbeknown to them, come in the room, fight, pick a fight with me. Obviously, they, they thought it was real and they, on the spot, then had to, uh, had to produce a physical description. We demonstrated how different eyewitness accounts are. And in the police world, this is something we encounter all the time. So, again, having said that, then we went into what can we do to generate an accurate physical description, just as an example of one of the modules of instruction. And we looked at, um, how to deal with people, uh, who are displaying emotions, whether it be crying or emotional outbursts, and certainly how to deal with a person if they're confronted with a weapon. So, uh, that training concluded this, uh, past week. We did the last session last week. We did two sessions to allow every school in the district to be able to send all of their receptionists and secretaries who provide access to buildings. So, we now have everybody trained. The training, uh, was very well received, uh, by the participants and obviously they're asking for more, uh, and continued training. And we have every intention of doing that. Uh, the next thing that I wanted to make you aware of is certainly, uh, as I mentioned earlier, Todd and the Safety Committee, we worked on an emergency operation plan. We looked at all the threats and hazards that can present themselves to the Powell Elementary School. Uh, we looked at which ones were medium and high risk and we developed protocols for action in the case of each of those threats or hazards. In addition to that, uh, we developed the protocol for lockdowns. Uh, should there be, uh, an event, uh, whether it be an intruder in the school or an event in the community where we have to lock down the school, so we certainly have procedures and protocol in place for that. And we certainly reviewed, uh, stage one, which are fire drill evacuations, stage two, which are prolonged evacuations, uh, outside of the actual building, and stage three, which are actually off-site. I know that, uh, Todd is planning a stage three evacuation in June. Uh, in fact, we did one today at the high school. And, uh, for the first time, having a thousand students, uh, what we did is just to acquaint our faculty and staff with what their roles and responsibilities would be in such an event. And in the case of the, um, the school, the high school, our reunification set, our stage three evacuation site was the Bennington Fire Station. So, today, uh, we, uh, exercised that with 160 faculty and staff. Uh, we went to the fire station and they all assumed their roles, they, they took place in whatever location they were assigned, uh, and then in addition to that, we had some fireworks extinguisher training. So, uh, as I mentioned to you before, we've got to be proactive, we've got to prepare, we've got to train. Uh, so, certainly, as a result of that drill, were there issues? Were there things that we know we have to tighten up on and look at closer? Absolutely. So, but, again, if we didn't drill, we would never know what we got to focus on. So, I would say, just as we're going to do that event with, with Todd at, at this school in June, we'll certainly look at and evaluate, you know, what are the problem areas, how can we do this better? And make sure that if it ever is a real occurrence, we're going to prepare. Moving on, we, uh, have achieved a major feat. Uh, prior to, uh, January of, of this past year, uh, there were buildings in our district that during the school day, uh, the perimeter was not locked. That meant that there could be access to the public and we knew that that was a real safety and security concern. So, as of this day, every SVSU student occupied building is, has a secure perimeter. It's locked and there's video monitored entry at all of our buildings. So, uh, that is a major accomplishment for us to be able to say that we can ensure that no intruder is going to have easy access into a building. Now, it's locked and again, we have trained people that are going to grant them access to the building. So, uh, we feel very good about that. Um, next thing that I wanted to, uh, mention to you is, um, in some of our buildings, we have, uh, contracted police presence. Certainly that, uh, occurs, uh, at the middle school and the high school. And, you know, these are the schools, if we look at the, uh, events that have occurred, uh, as, as a result of school shooters, et cetera, it's generally at the high school or very even, less seldom at the middle school. So, we felt that we needed increased police presence, certainly at, at that level of our education at SVSU, so we've done that. Um, our security team at the high school is on the police frequency. Uh, we can communicate directly with the police at any time, uh, should there be an incident where we need immediate intervention, uh, whether they're on-site or not. Uh, I talked to you about the identikit visitor substitute system and again, that's going to be in place, as I mentioned, in all SVSU schools. Another area that, uh, we were asked to, um, tighten up on was, uh, a medical emergency event. So, uh, we have made preparations to have AED devices. And again, I think Powell was one of the schools, again, just as they were distinctive in having the identikit system, you had the foresight to have the AED. So, we congratulate you on that. Uh, but we feel that every school in the district should have that. We did have one at the middle school and we did have, uh, one at the high school, but again, we wanted to make sure our elementary schools, uh, our additional elementary schools in the district also had one that was available, uh, both with adult and pediatric pads. So, that's been included in the budget, that will be in place, uh, as of the next academic year. Uh, we have established, uh, an SVSU, uh, Safety Committee and we meet, uh, no less often than every other month. We bring, uh, issues that other safety committees from district schools, uh, may have brought to me as far as a concern. And I introduce new types of trainings, new types of safety initiatives that I would like to, uh, see in the schools. And the SVSU, uh, Safety Committee reviews those and gives me the green light to go ahead with that. And I'll talk to you about a few of those, uh, safety initiatives, uh, in a few minutes. Uh, the next thing that we did, uh, was have a procedure in place. We have determined, uh, at the high school in particular, that sometimes there are, uh, people that are inappropriate for entry into the school building and even inappropriate to be on the school campus. And very often that might, uh, result from some sort of, uh, domestic violence situation where there might be, uh, a restraining order against a particular person. Certainly, we don't want them, uh, to be able to encounter either a student, uh, uh, or an adult that might be involved in that, uh, on, uh, our campus. So, we issue what are called no trespass orders. Uh, the administration can issue those. They would be then served by law enforcement on the individual that's named in that order. If they should appear on campus, it's a criminal offense and they could be arrested, uh, on site. If they should have to come on campus, they have to seek permission from the administration and have a valid reason to do so and we have to be aware of the fact when they're coming. So, that is another, uh, initiative that we have in place now, uh, to help ensure What we also, uh, want to do is obviously, I think you know that we, um, drill. And, um, the requirement for drilling is that we have five lockdown containment drills a year and six, uh, fire egress, uh, drills a year. I think in the past, uh, we got, we got remiss in that we would conduct these fire drills, you know, maybe at nine o'clock, uh, every time we did one in the morning or we would do it on the same day. And that's something that is not going to be acceptable and we've tightened up on that this year. So, what I mean by that is when we do these fire egress drills, we got to do them at different times of the day. We've got to do them during lunches, we've got to do them in, in the first part of the day, in the afternoon. We have to use our community, uh, our community partners to assist us in that. So, we're doing egress drills, we're having the fire department on-site, we're doing lockdowns now, different times of the day because, you know what? We found out when we did, for instance, uh, a lockdown at the high school during a lunchtime, that clear the halls directive couldn't be heard in the lunchroom. So, that has caused us now to reevaluate and we're going to go to, in addition to the verbal announcement, we're going to go to blue strobes, uh, to be able to have both visible and audible, uh, alert that we want you to go into lockdown. But if we never did that during lunch, we never would have known that was a problem. So, we've got to be diligent in trying to change up the times we do these drills, knowing we have to do six egress and five lockdowns. Let's make sure that we get the best bang for our buck here. Let's do them different days, different times and make sure that we can, uh, be alerted to any issues that might surround those. One of the, one of the big, uh, problems that we had, uh, district-wide was the fact that in many of our schools, we have interior doors between the classrooms. And, you know, I think, uh, the Safety Committee certainly has, has talked about this before. What happens if, if a teacher leaves his or her room unlocked? Should they go to the restroom? Should they go to make a copy? And we have the unfortunate circumstance of calling to clear the halls, perhaps an intruder in the building. That one door left open can grant access to multiple rooms. So, even though we have most people being conscientious about locking their doors, shutting the lights, quiet, going into the safe refuge area, that one door that was left open might grant access to multiple rooms where a perpetrator can just walk through and have free access. So, we've really asked, uh, we've really asked faculty and staff to tighten up on that. And, you know, I would hope that, you know, when we leave our cars, we lock them, when we leave our houses, we lock them. You know, you've got to lock that room every time you leave it. Uh, and I say, even it's just for a few minutes to either go to the restroom or make a copy or get a cup of coffee, uh, that room's got to be locked because, you know, it could be the unfortunate, um, circumstance of where that's when the lockdown or when that's the lockdown is called. And, you know, we've had to resort to faculty and staff and say, you know, you never want to be responsible for people getting injured or killed as a result of you just not locking the door. So, uh, we've gotten that message out. I'm happy to say that, uh, the incident commanders have reported that, uh, we're in comply, we're compliant now. Uh, it's rare that, that doesn't happen now, so, but we've got to keep sending that message. And we've got to have our incident commanders, if we do these lockdowns, make sure that's the case. And even on a, as they walk around in the day, uh, school administrators, if nobody is in that room and that door isn't locked, you know, we really got to talk to that faculty member and say, you know, you just can't do this. We have, uh, as I said, to be, to be proactive, we've got to, uh, continue to attend trainings. Uh, every time one of these events occurs, what we do, uh, as a group, is we evaluate, we look at, um, how could we have done this better? And just to give you an example, uh, of one of the things that you're probably going to see in the very near future, uh, one of the problems, uh, in, in these Vermont containment that we had both in South Burlington and Essex, where they were locked down in, in four to five hours, was the fact that people have got to use the restroom. Students got to go. And, you know, when you got to go, you got to go. And, uh, obviously, if you're in a safe area, uh, in a classroom, uh, that's difficult. And what we saw, that students, uh, when they had to go, even in lockdown, just left the room to go to the bathroom. Obviously, you can't tolerate that. So, um, I've come up with a, a solution to that and, uh, we're going to call it a go bucket. And, uh, this is going to be presented to the SVSU Safety Committee. Uh, we're presenting it to our local Safety Committee this week. And what it's going to involve is a, a five-gallon bucket and in there are going to be trashcan liners, uh, a blanket, uh, hand sanitizer, room deodorizer, feminine products that should we have to go into a prolonged lockdown, they have a blanket to cover themselves and they'll be able to do that in, in a classroom setting. So, uh, should the SVSU Committee consider that to be a favorable type of activity? Should our local committee, Safety Committees be in favor of that? That's something you may see. But I give you that example because we've got to continue to think about these things. Here's students putting themselves in harm's way to take care of a biological need and we would be remiss if we didn't think about that and, and have a solution to that. So, what I'm saying is, you know, we've, we've constantly got to be thinking, we've constantly got to be proactive to make sure that we address these types of, uh, real concerns. Another two areas of training that I really felt, uh, we had to, uh, really strengthen, uh, one was school bus safety. The DuFord Transportation does an outstanding job, uh, in transportation for the SVSU district. They have done minimal training in bus evacuation, but there hasn't been any safety training. There hasn't been safety training as far as how do we prepare to ride the bus as a student? What do we do at the bus stop? How do we board the bus? What do we do on the bus? How do we exit the bus? All of these things, uh, have got to be, uh, included in the safety program. Uh, so, uh, I developed a school bus, uh, safety training. The SVSU Safety Committee is reviewing that. Also, I developed a letter to be sent to the parents, telling them now about new initiatives even that DuFord Transportation is taking. You may or may not know that there are cameras on the buses that record both audio and video. And that's for our students' safety. Uh, again, that's their property, but certainly, school officials have access to it. In addition to that, those buses are GPS monitored. So, if somebody said, "That bus never appeared here," we can tell where the buses were, where they are at any point in time. Uh, again, another safety initiative. Should a bus not appear at a location when we expect it to, we can immediately see, where is that bus? Is that bus having a problem by looking at the GPS locator? So, that school bus training, uh, will commence, uh, on-site at each elementary school next year. And again, uh, I'll be, uh, once the SVSU Safety Committee approves this, um, they're reviewing it now, uh, we'd probably be sending letters out to the principals, uh, the letter that we've developed to go to parents, uh, notifying them that we're going to be conducting this training and some of the other things related to bus safety that I mentioned. And we'd be doing the training on-site with buses and drivers. Uh, and again, it will be up to the incident commander, the principal, to determine, do we want to do it by grade or how do we want to do it? So, that's something that's coming in the near future. Yes? Yes?
Including in that safety, is there going to be anything about if somebody, a student brings a gun onto the bus?
Certainly, we're going to consider that, yes, as part of the safety training, yes. And what's the protocol?
And at the high school and middle school, are you going to have the blue lights like we have? So if lockdown is going on, they will know that they shouldn't proceed to the building?
We're having, at, at the high school, the middle school is, we're, we're looking at some other options, but at the high school, we're going to have the blue strobe lights in high noise areas.
Okay.
So I mentioned to you the cafeteria, that we just learned that we couldn't hear the all-clear command. We also have, CDC and the high school have a combined emergency operation plan. And at the CDC, we have several areas, automotive, woodworking, the metal shop, and again, same type of thing, high machinery. So we're going to have blue lights in there, so those will be interior. We're also going to have exterior strobes with associated signage that says, if that strobe is flashing, do not attempt to enter the campus.
Okay, because the kids come and go with early release later entry.
One other thing that, now that you've asked that question, one other thing that we're going to be palining at the high school this year too, because we're going to be installing these blue lights and doing the wiring for that, there are now, just as we have the red pull stations for fire alarm activation, there are blue stations now that would, if that pull station is activated, there would be an enunciator that says, "Clear the halls." So it would be able to be activated by someone other than an administrator. If a student sees a gun or sees a problem, they'd be able to do it. So we're looking at that, and we're going to pile at that at the high school and see how that goes.
Awesome.
And that'll probably be next year as well.
Good.
The other training that I think is very critical, and this is recommended by the National Fire Association that puts out criteria as far as active shooters and hostile situations, is we've got to teach our faculty and staff, A, to recognize a threat. And if they recognize a threat, how do they evaluate? How do they assess that threat? And how does the institution do that? So there is a whole protocol for that, and I'm developing a training that will be, the first part of the training, the first phase of the training will be a one-hour training. I expect, once the S V S U Safety Committee reviews this, that next year, at a regular faculty meeting at every S V S U school, I'll be in there presenting this to all faculty and staff. Again, then there would be, probably be a follow-up training the next six months or the next year that relates to that. But we've got to train our faculty and our staff to recognize what constitutes a threat? What is a threatening situation? So these are two of the trainings that, one, the school bus one is, is being evaluated right now, the, the threat, the threat assessment, one will be to the S V S U Committee probably by April. So these are two trainings that we expect to be offering next year, and I'm sure by the time next year comes, we're going to be offering additional trainings. Because as they say, every time one of these incidents occur, we learn something. And then we say, okay, then we really do the training. And our faculty and staff is so receptive to training, I haven't had anybody say anything but, you know, we, we want as much trainings we can get. So I applaud them for that, and we're going to make sure we do everything we can to meet that demand. So that's kind of where we are. Anybody have any questions?
I do. First of all, and this is all due to safety, I personally don't believe teachers should have guns. Teachers' jobs are to teach, not to have a gun. I personally do not want guns in the hands of the teachers.
Somebody suggest that?
Yeah. The other thing is, on behalf of our Powell students entering the middle school, I brought this up at the S V S U, I'm still not happy with the fact that the doors are locked and the students have to stand outside until they are allowed into the cafeteria. My suggestion to the SU Board and to the Chair of the MAU is to pay a paraprofessional an extra hour or so, and let the kids come into the building, don't keep them out in the cold and the wet. Here you are talking about safety, okay? Hypothetically, they're out there, people know they're out there, and you get a crazy that comes down the road with a gun. What do you think they're going to do? They go, oh. And this is what bothers me. And on behalf of our Powell students, I'm not going to stop arguing yet.
Okay.
Something needs to be done.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll certainly speak to the administration at, at the middle school.
Cindy spoke at the national.
Oh, yeah.
Was it Cameron?
No, I didn't make it there yet. That's my next place.
Okay.
But I want to thank you for all the work that you've done.
You're welcome.
The work that you're working with, the time you're spending with our own safety committee, and I think you're moving in the right direction.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else have any questions?
Couple more things, Vic. Yeah, I do want to thank Jim Colkeen. He really brought this as a priority, bringing you on, and I want to thank you, Vic, to, you're always in communication with us. I mean, if we have a drill, we're in communication with you, we tell you, you know, what's happened, you give us suggestions, so I really want to thank you for the communication there. And just one other thing, tomorrow at one o'clock, Vic and state police will be here to do another safety assessment, and Jim Colkeen will be here tomorrow.
That's part of the governor's initiative, that all schools have to have a safety evaluation. So we were up in Powell earlier this week, Shasburg. I'm in Powell tonight.
Right.
Yeah, this is Powell.
The state police will be here tomorrow at one o'clock, yeah.
Okay, good.
So again, thank you.
And just one more thing along those lines of thought. The superintendent and I decided that not only are we going to consider the law enforcement that is involved in your particular jurisdiction, but we know, if there was an event here, you would have state police, you'd have Bennington County Sheriff's, you'd have Bennington, County Bennington Police. So what we're trying to do is, the law enforcement agency who has jurisdiction will conduct the actual assessment, but we're inviting other law enforcement officials from these other jurisdictions. So we all can be coordinated, we all can be on the same page. So for instance, tomorrow, in addition to the state police, we'll have the Bennington Police, and I believe there's going to be a representative from the Bennington County Sheriff's Department, Bob Kalanowski, I believe, is coming. So that's, you know, that's again, just to be proactive, just so everybody's on the same page. So from a law enforcement perspective, that would always be an advantage to us.
That's good. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, next on the agenda, the PTG introduction.
Jamie George, our new PTG president, parent-teacher group, I should say.
Parent-teacher group, yes.
So Jamie George is here, and Samantha Spence as well, and we have a teacher representative that's on the committee as well, we have Kristy Crawford, so want to welcome them to our, our PTG. And knowing that we want to do fun things with our kids and educational things, I think we have a public group now and we're moving forward, so I want to thank you for taking on the president position. Thank you, Jamie.
Do you know all of our?
Do you guys want to say anything?
I think I know pretty much. I know, I think I know almost everybody.
You know John?
Okay.
John's good for cooking hot dogs.
I know everybody. Yeah, actually, I do.
And we have Tammy?
Yep.
You know Tammy?
Angie? Yep.
Okay, and I'm sending. Okay. And we want to thank you very much, because I know the jobs that you're doing are for the children, and that's important.
Yeah, we, uh, let's see, there's about, I think, I figured out, there's about 20 of us now. So not everybody comes to the meetings, but we have different ways of.
That's a lot.
Yeah, of communicating, and there's teachers, there's parents, there's grandparents. And our goal is pretty much one fun event after school hours a month during the school that we provide for the kids. But the PTG does a ton here, so they help fund anything from track, if drama needs help, they do field day things, kindergarten registration, teacher retirement, staff appreciation. I mean, there's a long list. They do a scholarship for a graduating child in 12th grade that attended Powell School. So there is a ton of things that PTG does, and there's a really great group of people who are invested in giving positive experiences to the kids and to the families.
May I ask, if you have time, that maybe, you know, every couple months, come in and give us an update?
Sure.
Keep in touch? We, we would like that.
Great.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome aboard. Okay. All right, next is the action plan. We have the finance, we have the treasurer's report for January, February, which is enclosed. Motion?
Some moved.
Okay, motion been made, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify, it's unanimous. Okay, I see propane contract.
I could speak to, as I was, Vic was giving his report, I was getting some texts from our treasurer, that the, the contract is not in there, so.
Right.
Your, um, your facilities director would like to change vendors, and Renee has the paperwork, so what she's asking, if the board would authorize the chair to come in and sign the new contract for propane.
For a different company?
For a different company, going from, going to Suburban, is that correct? Yeah, from Haskins, yep.
All right. What's the board's pleasure? They were going to switch to Suburban?
Are we switching due to price?
We're switching.
It was a combination of, price was similar, but there was issues with service.
Price and service, we were having trouble with service.
Okay.
With the recommendation of your facility director handoff, that our director of finance operations.
Yeah, they got together. Yeah, I was wondering where that was sitting.
Yeah.
That was good. All right, what's the board's pleasure?
So were you just looking for a motion to have you go sign?
A motion, you had me sign, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so all those in favor? All right, and you will let me know?
Yes.
Just have Renee send me an email and I'll stop.
Sure, you will hear from her.
Okay. Okay, procedures for executing contracts.
That is, there's a motion that comes from our auditor. Turns out that purchase recs are considered contracts, and the superintendent or their designee, which in this case is our director of finance operation, signs all the purchase recs. Our auditor, NDOE, considers those contracts. So it's not going to be employment contracts, you're not authorizing the superintendent or designee. Chair will still come in and sign those, but just our run-of-the-mill.
Okay.
So that's the motion from the auditor that he would like in the record that you've authorized.
Okay, can you be definite?
Motion would be to authorize the office of the superintendent to designate to execute contract on behalf of the Powell School District.
Okay. Okay, motion has been made, second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. Very good. All right, now we have the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Unanimous. Okay, policy.
Move 2600, two potential evaluation review.
Second.
And that's to adopt. Motion been made, second. Is there any discussion on that one?
I don't see any.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, it's unanimous. All right, 3200, emergency closings, again, this is to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Very good. 5110, immunization, to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any questions on that one?
Sure.
Did I hear one?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. All right, all those in favors? All right, very good. That's passed, too. Now, 4400, safety and security of employees, this is to warn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's, motion been made, second. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor? Excellent. Okay, facilities update.
So I checked with Mr. Davis last week, and his plan is to come to the April meeting with building needs for summer projects.
All good.
So I think that's what we're planning to do.
Yes.
So he didn't have anything for tonight, but again, meeting with myself and Cindy, if you have suggestions, of course, I know he's in contact with you as well, that will be for the April meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. Excellent. Okay, now we have the superintendent's report.
So we said that one of the policies that you adopt are warned tonight, the emergency closing, you know, the last line of it, the school calendar or length of day may be affected. Well, this is a year where the length of the school calendar has been affected. We've had nine cancellations, seven delays, and one early dismissal. That, that's a lot. Not all, one of the delays was a faculty-only day, and one was a day that was only the middle school. So what is that going to mean for the calendar? Well, I know as soon as I say what it's going to, what impact it'll be, we'll have another snow day. So I'm hesitant to say that I was a little worried about today, maybe even tomorrow, but it seems like we're going to be a little out of the harm's way on that. But you never know till you wake up in the morning. Just the process starts at 4:30 in the morning, that's what time I start looking at weather reports around five, I check with the bus company, they're here, hearing reports back from the road crews. I usually have to make the decision by five, no later than 5:30, because of when, every, all the preparations for buses rolling. And it really, for me, comes down, if the buses can safely go on the road, then we have school. Have we gotten every call correct this year? I'm sure there are many who would say that I have not, but it is not an exact science. Like, as, I'm borrowing this quote from somebody else, everybody is a meteorologist the next day after the storm.
Oh, yeah.
And often what it's doing and what the projections are at 5:00 in the morning is not what really turned out by 3:00 in the afternoon, so it's, it's, but safety of our students have to come first. So right now, the last day of school for students is the 27th of June, and the 28th of June for staff. So what we are looking, the last day of school with five snow days was published in the calendar to be June 22nd. At June 22nd, we will have 177 student days in, which makes the state requirement 175. So I'd like to, but I really won't come back until April, but I would like to come back to the board in April, once we are really, we'll never be sure, you could have a snowstorm in May.
Light your tongue.
Yep. That, have that be the, the last day of school, that Friday, June 22nd, for students, and even that's kind of late, you know, it's going to be warm in these classrooms. And then we'll do some type of staff development days for, for those days, the next week, so only the staff would return.
Yeah, sometimes you get forgiveness.
So my understanding is getting a waiver from the state would entitle me using vacation time, so, because they would say to me, well, you could have school, April school vacation, so why should we give you a waiver?
Wait till after vacation.
Yeah. So, and I did have a meeting last week with the teachers' association to discuss that, like what would be the impact if we had school vacation? I'm sure parents, you know, yeah, don't, it's, it's, I can't say that it's off the table of discussion, because I mean, if, you know, we had a week of snow and between now and then, we may have to, everything from Saturday to Memorial Day, those are all things that were discussed. But right now, it's going to go with the traditional plan, just tacking them on to the end of the day, but fingers crossed we don't have any more snow days. And I'll, by your April meeting, we'll have a better picture of that, but, yeah, I'm not.
I like the delay, the two-hour delay, that works out.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, the one-hour delay didn't work out too well.
I've never seen that.
That was a request from, actually, it was Shasburg DPW, were the only ones reporting that they needed time. Everybody else was saying that they were good to go. They said they needed an hour. I got a phone call back at about 7:15, 7:20, saying we need another hour, and I said, it's too late.
Too late, yes.
Too late by that time, yeah. So that's an update on that. Act 46, Section 10. So we filed Section 9 reports under Act 46. Section 10 is what the Secretary of Education will file, and she wants to have conversations with the school boards. That's what she's calling them, conversations. They requested us to go to Barry. I announced that last Wednesday night at the BSD meeting, because we had just gotten the email that day. I requested that, could we do it go-to-meeting, rather than truck a whole board up there for a half-hour meeting and then back, and then, you know, and they're in half-hour increments, so how I would get all the boards there, just would, so they, they sent back an email that the Secretary of Education is open to doing that by go-to-meeting. We will send it up, set it up in central office. Our day is April 5th. I don't have exact time, so it's going to be somewhere in between 1:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon. That is our time. You don't all have to be there, but you're all welcome to attend. I will, once I verify, the proposal right now is to lump, so three districts did a similar Section 9, that would be Shasburg, Woodford, Bennington, so they would be one meeting, one half-hour meeting together. Pownell did a separate Section 9, so you will have your own half-hour, and North Bennington will have their own half-hour, too. So I just don't have those half-hour times slot yet, but they'll be somewhere between 1:00 and 3:00.
And it's on Thursday the 5th?
Thursday the 5th, in the central office, yeah. And that's, we'll do...
Thank you for, for doing the go-to meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, a trip to Barry, you know, would have been nice, but no.
No.
No, thank you.
No, and, and I would have driven for you, too. And you would like my Boston driving.
No, thank you.
So, uh...
I love your driving, no.
I do want to say, and we all know this, but I'll, I want to say it, all budgets passed, and I just want to thank the voters of Pownell for supporting our school and our budgets again. So thank you for that. And you were re-elected chair tonight, so I have a new copy of the education law book for the chair, and...
I'm going to fill these people money. They keep putting me back in.
That's why I offered tonight, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
You'll get an email from me once we have the time confirmation.
Very good. Appreciate that. Okay, our next meeting is going to be April 18th.
I'm sorry, I said one more thing. I need, if everyone could just go through the contact sheet and update any, as we reorganize, we always do the contact. If anyone's phone number or email address or physical address changed, please let us
All right, very good. So our next meeting is going to be April 18th at 5:30 here in the, in the library. I will fill this out, and I will probably drop it off or get it back to you, because this is a lot of writing to take up on time.
Are you around that school vacation, are you here?
I am not.
And I won't be here either, yet.
That's the week of the vacations.
I mean, if you wanted to meet, I could send somebody other than me, but that is school vacation.
No, no, we usually...
We don't want to drag your principal back from vacation.
No, no, no. I forgot.
Phoenix, Phoenix.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure? The problem is the 25th, a week after SVSU.
But they don't meet till 7:00, so it's the same as MAU. So you could meet that week at 5:30, that night, 25th.
And just talk fast. We'll keep the agenda short. Then we'd have to make it to Bennington. Okay, no change. All right, what's the board's pleasure?
Because you have to be at SVSU, too, that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, not just me, yeah. Or you could go to a Tuesday.
You can't get in here early, early at 5:00. Probably at 5:00. What if we did ours at 5:00, would that give you plenty of time?
Sure, SVSU doesn't start till 7:00.
So because if Tammy can get here at 5:00 at, just that one time.
Okay, that's that, the 25th? All right, so we'll put Pownell at 5:00. Is that all right with you, John?
Aye.
Okay, 5:00. All right, I do have one, I almost forgot. The Historic Society has approached me in reference to the senior building on North Pownell Road. She would like to have a meeting, a joint meeting with the selectmen and the school board to discuss the, the building. And so I told her, she is available, she gave a couple of dates, April 3rd, which is a Tuesday, or, what was the other one? I think the other one was March. Yes, March, the 26th, which is actually next Tuesday, next Monday. So what is your pleasure? If she would like to meet with us?
What time?
We said a time, any...
3rd, that's for me.
What'd you say, the 3rd?
April 3rd, yeah.
April 3rd? Okay, if we can actually tell her what time we're available. 5:30, 6?
5:30 is fine with me.
5:30?
Sure.
Is that okay with you, Tammy?
Yep.
Uh-huh, or what?
I'll have to let you know, it may be even here, I'm not sure. I'm not sure where they're going to meet. The town office is small, I don't know, maybe. All right, so 5:30, April 3rd, and I will get back to you on the location, okay?
They can buy the Legion.
They what?
They can buy the Legion.
We don't want to spend money on the Legion. We like to save our money for school things.
And Cindy, I just want to mention a couple more things, if I can.
Sure.
So today was the end of our trimester, so wanted to thank the teachers and the parents for upcoming conferences. They are this next week, and they're always well-attended. The teachers spend a lot of, of extra time accommodating parents at different times of the day, and like I said, they're always well-attended, so I want to thank the teachers for their accommodating the parent schedules and the parents for, for attending. Just a couple other things, our kindergarten parent night is coming up on April the 4th in the evening, and our screenings will be April 12th and 13th. So we're looking forward to a new kindergarten group coming to Pownell School.
And I apologize for...
That's okay.
It's the dance Friday.
And we do have a PTG...
I saw the sun, yes.
And we have, Jamie, did you just want to mention your DJ contact?
Um, sure, so we, um, we are having, we are having a dance this Friday, and it's free admission, where Pownell School is one of the PB and JAM Slam drop-offs.